Sorry, that was half-hearted. 9:30 I'll call the meeting to order and before we begin, I'm going to turn it over to CAO Adley.
Thank you, Warden, and for council today, I would just like to formally welcome our new Director of Public Works, Melissa Abercrombie, to our senior leadership team. Obviously, no introductions necessary. Melissa has been with the county for 20 years now, starting in a role of engineering project management, but for the last 10 years has filled a role of a manager within the organization. And I'm pleased to say that after a substantive internal and external search for the Director of Public Works with multiple highly qualified candidates, we were able to come back and offer the position to an internal with such strength, and we look forward to working with Melissa for years to come. So congratulations and welcome permanently to the spot uncircled.
Thank you, welcome. First item of business then after that is adoption of the agenda. Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, second by Councilor Mayberry, resolved the agenda be approved as amended to include a delegation from Darryl Hall and Evan McHugh, residents of the town of Ingersoll as item 6.2.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Having adopted the agenda, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Counselor Acioni.
Thank you. I, Jerry Acioni, declare a potential pecuniary interest related to item unfinished business 9.1 on the open and meeting agenda February 12, 2025 because of the following reasons: that I own property that could be applicable to policy being discussed under proposed amendments.
And you're going to forward that to the clerk. Thank you. Any other disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Not seeing any. Adoption of the council minutes at the previous meeting. Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, second by Deputy Warden Petrie, resolved the council minutes of January 22nd, 2025 be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And public meetings, Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, second by Counselor Tate, resolved that council rise and go into a public meeting pursuant to the Development Charges Act and the Warden chaired the public meeting.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And I will turn it over to Watson and Associates. You have 15 minutes for your presentation, and the timer should be on there and the mic should be on, but just give it a double check before you start.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. So just a bit of an introduction to the purpose of the public meeting. As you're aware, the county passed its development charge bylaw in June of last year. Since the time that bylaw was passed, there have been a number of changes that have been identified by staff that would constitute the need to amend the bylaw. The Development Charges Act does specifically allow bylaws to be amended, and it also requires that a public meeting must be held before passing the amended bylaw, which is the intent of the meeting this morning to provide an overview of the rationale for the amendment and to give the public an opportunity to provide input. So in terms of the rationale for the amendment itself, so there've been a number of changes to development charge eligible capital cost that have been identified to be included in the calculation of the charge. One of the most significant of those is the removal of the growth-related costs for long-term care in the calculation of the charge. Then there've also been a number of updates to the anticipated capital needs for services related to a highway, ambulance, water, and wastewater services in specific service areas within the county. And in aggregate, the change in capital cost would actually reduce the development charge capital cost by about $5.5 million. The one policy change that's being proposed to be included in the amended bylaw is to remove the exemption for industrial uses from the development charges bylaw. So currently, all industrial development is exempt for the payment of development charges in your bylaw. It's proposed that that would be removed, and only the statutory exemption that applies to expansions of existing industrial buildings would continue to apply. So when looking at the changes in terms of the capital cost by service area, they're listed here, and so, as I mentioned, some minor changes to the cost within services related to a highway. Within ambulance services, some more significant increases here to recognize the anticipated facility space that will be required to house additional staff and fleet within that service area. The most, the greatest change then would be the removal of long-term care, removing about $17 million from the calculation of the countywide charge. And then we look at the cost for the service areas that are imposed on an area-specific basis. Within Woodstock for wastewater, there's a notable increase, just almost $14 million in growth-related costs have been added in response to additional infrastructure that's required through additional study by county staff. And then in the other areas, whether it be in Tillsonburg, Ingersoll, or Thamesford, we see in general those costs decreasing overall, a slight increase in Ingersoll. So to look at how that, how those changes can impact the overall calculation of the charge, the, these tables, first of all, are looking at the countywide charges only, so excluding the water and wastewater area-specific charges. And what we can see is that the, for the residential charge, when looking at a single and semi-detached residential building, that charge would go down by almost $1,700 per unit, a 21% decrease, and that being driven by the, largely by the change to long-term care. When looking at non-residential, we actually see an increase in the charge, and that's because the long-term care services were not applicable to non-residential development, so that removal of those capital costs does not have a downward impact on the non-residential charge. We have an upward impact as a result of the increasing cost for studies, ambulance, and services related to highway. So overall, about a 4% increase in the countywide charge. So in this table blends in the impacts of the countywide change in the charge with the area-specific changes to the water and wastewater charges. And in the lines highlighted in the light yellow color, those are where we do have changes to the water and wastewater cost within those service areas. So with, with the exception of Woodstock, the charge would decrease in all service areas when looking at the countywide and water and wastewater changes in aggregate. So we'd see a 20% decrease in Tillsonburg, a 3% decrease in Ingersoll, and an 18% decrease in Thamesford. Over in Woodstock, we would see a slight 2% increase, or about $300 per dwelling unit, when looking at the combined impact of the decrease in the countywide charge and the increase in the Woodstock wastewater charge. Then when looking at the non-residential charges, so a little bit different than on the residential side, we do see increases generally, with the exception of Tillsonburg and Thamesford, the charges would actually increase across the board because of the increase in the countywide charge, as I mentioned, because of the impact or lack of impact of the change with long-term care. And so in Woodstock, we'd see the charge go up by about $11 per square meter, about a 21% increase. In Ingersoll, the charge would go up by $4.62, about a 7% increase. And then in the other areas, the charge would generally stay relatively constant, about a 1% increase with the change to the countywide charge. So just to highlight on the residential side what these changes mean, as you'd imagine with relatively minimal changes or downward changes to the calculation of the charge, we can see that the relative competitiveness of the total area and county charge across the county and in other geographic areas would remain, would remain constant from a competitiveness standpoint, so a slight decrease, excuse me, slight decrease in all areas, again with the exception of Woodstock, a 2% increase, not changing that relative position. We haven't included the non-residential comparisons here, but generally, the relative position of the municipalities in the county remains generally the same when looking at the non-residential sectors. And then just to highlight the financial impact of the removal of the industrial exemption that's being proposed, when we looked at the shortfall in development charge revenue that's anticipated with the current statutory, non-statutory exemptions that are included in the county's bylaw, that's anticipated to result in about an $85 million shortfall over the 10-year period, or about 37% of the development charge recoverable cost would not actually be recovered through development charges and would become a tax or rate-based funding requirement of the county. With the proposed removal of the industrial exemption, that would reduce that shortfall from about $85 million to about $42 million, so roughly half of the forecast revenue foregone as a result of the exemptions is from the industrial development. And so with the removal of that exemption, that's anticipated to result in additional $4.3 million in industrial development charge revenue per year. So the next steps in the study process then are to receive feedback from council and the public. The draft amending bylaw will be revised as needed based on that feedback from council, and then the bylaw will come back for consideration for passage at the February 26 council meeting.
Questions from council? Deputy Warden Petrie, then Counselor Gilvaze.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Obviously, there were some items updated to consider from the April background study, going to this one with different capital projects being added. Were the growth figures also updated with the new growth figures that the county received as part of this update?
No, they weren't. So the study has been, or this amendment has been prepared as an addendum to the original background study, so it's being undertaken in the context of that initial background study and the growth forecast therein.
That's my only question for the presenter.
Counselor Gilvaze.
Thank you, through you, Warden. On the financial impact of the removal of industrial exemption, it states that under the, the current program that exists, there would be a loss of $85 million over a 10-year forecast. Okay? So, but that changes to $42 million by changing the bylaw. My question is, like, for best practices in regards to other communities, if this was income that you were never going to get, how is it considered? income that you were never going to get, how is it considered a loss? Like, why would you not then just, like, stretch out your, your DCs, like, to mitigate the expense of the taxpayer? Because essentially now, what we're looking at is, like, for 2025, a $5 million shortfall that the taxpayers have to make up. But is there another way to make up those dollars? Like, I guess what I'm struggling with is the, the economy, things that are potentially on the horizon. Is this a typical best practice where that loss is, like, just inserted in the budget and taxpayers are expected to make that up through the levy?
So there, there are different ways it can be accounted for. But I think what I want to emphasize is that where this advice comes from is that in the Development Charges Act, it's specific that you cannot impose higher develop, or you cannot impose lower development charges on one type of development, and as a result of that, increase the charges on another type. You can't cross-subsidize between different types of development. And so what happens is, if you exempt development and therefore don't collect the DC revenue that you anticipated, and you don't account for that in any way, then that shortfall does get passed on to future development when you update your, your next bylaw, and therefore you're in violation of that provision of the act. So, so that's where that advice comes from, that it needs to be accounted for. Now, there are, operationally, there's different ways you could account for that. It can be, we think the most transparent way to do that is to account for that in your budget the next year. It puts that in that operating budget council as understanding of the financial implications of the exemption policies that either the province or they have elected to have in their bylaw. But you could also account for it by adjusting the development charges that you allocate to eligible projects. You could account for it on the expenditure side. You could account for it over a longer period of time as well. It wouldn't necessarily have to be in the following year, as long as you are accounting for it and not passing it on in the recalculation of development charges.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden. I just want a clarification. Are you only accepting questions at this time, or are we able to provide feedback?
There's no motion on the floor, so I would say this would be questions only. There's nothing to be debated right now.
Okay, even though it's a public meeting?
It's a public meeting, but there's nothing for council to debate, so I would suggest there's no, like-
Fair enough, thank you.
-without a motion. Councilor Gillevasey.
Sorry, I have a question. Through you, Warden. My other question would be, so how does this affect people that may be in the queue? So is it, like, if the site plan approval has already happened, that they would continue to be exempt? Or is this a hard, like, this is when the date is, when the bylaw is adopted, that it's anything moving forward of that? Maybe if you could just explain that?
So, no additional transition provisions have been proposed, so that when the bylaw is passed, the, if the removal of that exemption was included in the bylaw, that would apply to all development going forward. Having said that, you would need to consider the provisions in the bylaw for when charges are calculated. So there are provisions in the act that if a development goes through a zoning bylaw amendment application or a site plan application, they have their charges calculated when the application is made. And so if they had that application made prior to this change, then the, they would be, and if they're industrial, they would continue to be exempt. But for, for developments that don't go through those planning approvals and they're just coming forward with a building permit application, if they came forward after the change, then the, the new bylaw or the amended bylaw would apply to them. Hopefully, that's, it can be a bit complicated with all the different provisions.
Through you, Warden, somewhat cloudy. My next question would be, if there's an existing factory and they add on to the factory, there's an exemption for, is there an exemption, like, for up to 49%? Is that correct?
Yes, within the, within the Development Charges Act, you're required to provide an exemption where an industrial building can expand their existing gross floor area by up to 50%. And that would exempt.
And if I do may follow up on the last question, sorry, Warden. I'm getting curious here. So, through you, Warden. So if a company expanded, say, up to the 50%, they would be DC exempt. And say, maybe five years down the road, they did another expansion. Does it go back to the original square footage, or does it go back to the square footage that exists, which would include that up to 50% expansion?
Yes, there are policies in the bylaw to prevent the continual resetting of the existing gross floor area, so they get up to 50% of what exists one time, and that's it.
Any other questions? Thank you. Are there any members of the public here who wish to speak to the public meeting? Come on up. And I think we have a sign-in sheet. You can sign in when you're done, when you're done presenting. There'll be a timer on the screen for you to see, and just make sure that microphone
That's nearly a billion-dollar investment. So a half a billion dollars in Ingersoll and half a billion dollars in, in Woodstock. And in Ingersoll alone, we anticipate we'll have one, just about 1,400 jobs as a result of the business park that's currently under development, and about the same in Woodstock. So we're talking really big numbers here. And so what we're cautioning council here today is to just appreciate the sensitive economic times we're in right now. It's challenging right now. We, we want to make these investments. We're prepared to make these investments, but we're asking council to work with us and to make sure that we're timing these development charges appropriately. Because what I will share with you, and I'm sure anyone else here today from the development sector is going to tell you the same thing, if we're not working together collaboratively to look at the big picture, we're going to just have to yield, and we're going to have to slow down the development activity that's happening. It's just, it's a reality right now. And of all the products we have out there right now, the only building we have empty is in Ingersoll. And what I will tell you is, we fully know that Ingersoll will take off. We recognize that we're probably maybe about five years early, but we're trying to direct industry to that region. But we need to work together to make that happen. We really do, and we can't do it alone. So we're cautioning council right now, we do think it's premature, particularly in Ingersoll, to be looking at the introduction of these development charges. In Woodstock, we understand it a little bit more. You started with these exemptions, and over time, as industry has started to come here and the economy has taken off, you've started to phase them in. We do recognize, and we do think that's appropriate, introduction of development charges. Ingersoll in particular, right now, it's premature. And I'm telling you right now, if, if we don't work together on this, it's going to slow down development activity, and ultimately, that's going to, and with all due respect to the previous presenter that we had here, I see the numbers somewhat differently, and I'll tell you why. We're talking about a singular, what we're looking at, loss in revenue. I see it very differently, because if that development doesn't happen, you're not, the DCs aren't going to happen, quite frankly. And also, what's going to happen here is if we build this park out, the West Oxford Business Park, the way that we plan to and want to make these investment dollars, it's going to be nearly $5 million in tax revenue per year, once that park is built. You're going to have over 1,000 new jobs in the community. So again, we want to look at the big picture here, not a singular transaction, but big picture. But we need to work together on this. So I would really urge council to consider not just what we talk about losing, but what we could potentially lose if we have to slow down our development activities as a result of outcosting us right now. Because the reason why industry is coming west is because we're able to build a little bit cheaper and we're able to keep rental rates a little bit lower. If all of a sudden, you start to bring those rates up, there's, there's no reason why industry is going to come, and they're going to leave the east and come to the west. It's just what's happening right now. It's, it's challenging. It's really hard right now to try to fill the buildings and bring tenants and, and industry to this area. And I will say that we're one of the biggest, if not the biggest, certainly one of them, spec builders in this region. So we're, there's, we take a lot of risk when we do that. We're coming to this community because we believe in this community, and we're making these investment dollars. But we, we are urging council to not work against us right now, and especially right now during what's already an economically challenging time coming out of the COVID era, everything. We, we saw a real ramp up in industry during COVID, and there was, there was a pretty small, a small vacancy rate at that time, but the vacancy rate has grown. And you can talk to any other developer in this room right now. I know we have developers from the east that are here today saying that it is challenging to fill their buildings right now. We have developers here that are saying they're giving away a, a year of free rent, and they're giving away, you know, they're starting to reduce the rates a little bit. And thankfully, we haven't seen a lot of that here, west. We think that there's been some good attractive features that's kept industry here, and we want to continue to do that, right? So we want to encourage council, again, to look at the big picture and find ways to work with us, because you've been doing something right by, particularly, I would say, here in Woodstock, where, you know, you've made those exemptions, and you've got the industry here, and we've started to see the economy kick off, and, and industry wants to be here. And we want to do the same thing in Ingersoll. And we just, we're asking council to please work with us so that we can make sure that we can continue to invest what we plan to invest, which is significant funds here over the next period of time, and we don't want to slow development down. We want to keep it coming. We, we know that you want these jobs coming to your communities. I anticipate you do. And you want these, the buildings, we completely yield out of our sites, so that the tax revenues coming in from these buildings are significant. And we, again, we truly believe in this region. We know industry do want to be here, but there's reasons they want to be here, and some of the reasons are because of the slight reduction in rental rates and cost to build to the west, which is where we are today. And, and so we're just encouraging you to, please, don't look short-term and look at a singular transaction. Please look at the big picture.
Thank you. Questions for the delegate? Councilor Accione.
Yeah, thank you, through you, Warden, to Ms. Hayward. Thank you for being here, first off, and in Oxford County. Thank you for being here with 214 Carsoning. Question is more towards the recent tariff threats. Have you noticed any differences yet? Being one of the largest developers in the area, I'm curious what you've seen, any difference on companies looking to come to this area?
Through you, the chair, to the mayor, and thank you for that question. It's an excellent question and something I'm glad you brought up, because I had meant to bring it up. Absolutely. So we started to see, last year, any developer in here will echo this, and I think most industry, most industry saw a significant slowdown last year. And towards the end of last year, we started to be encouraged. We started to see things pick up, and we started to fill. If you come along the 401, we just got Curritack just came into a 10-year lease in our, our building there, and down along the Woodall Way area, we just, we filled our product up there, and, you know, we have good industry coming to the, to the region, and they're not fully operational yet, but you'll see that parking lot full soon, and you're going to see industry here soon. So we started to feel encouraged. As soon as you start feeling encouraged in business, then all of a sudden, there's another dark horse. And that's what we're experiencing right now with these tariffs. The cost of steel is currently, right now, we're talking about significant tariffs that are going on the cost of steel. So that we have all of these things that are, we're already working against right now that's going to really impact the cost of development activity. And then if that's compounded by our local government looking at removing exemptions that they put in bylaws for a good reason, then that's, again, working against us, and it's, it's, it's just going to slow development. There's no doubt about it. It will slow development, and the net result will be less revenues for this community, and you'll be looking at your tax base to see where are those revenues coming from. If they aren't coming from the yield of these buildings, they're going to be coming from somewhere else.
Councilor Gillevasey.
Thank you, through you, Warden. Do you build projects in any communities that do have DC?
We do, yeah, absolutely. We do. Mm-hmm. Yep. And that's why I said, and that's why I didn't want to be standing up here saying, through the chair, I didn't want to be standing up here saying that, as developers, we don't believe in development. We absolutely do. We recognize how important they are. We recognize that critical infrastructure and services are needed in your community, and there's reasons you charge fees for that 100%. And in fact, that's why I wanted to, out of the gate, say, I think Woodstock did it appropriately, where they phased them in, and that's, you know, I think the result has been favorable. I would, I would think it, I think most would agree that it's been favorable. And we're just cautioning the same thing in Ingersoll. I think in Ingersoll, and this group would know better than I would for sure, but I, I don't think there's been a spec builder really ever in, in Ingersoll at all, that's been, and certainly not one investing these kind of dollars. So, and there's a reason for that. It's just harder to get industry that far west right now, and the way you do it is by having, by being able to buy land a little bit cheaper and working with the local community on things like development charges and, you know, phased in taxes in order to, to get that investment there, to get the industry there. And then over time, we do believe that introducing the development charges, once the industry kicks off, then that is appropriate. But all we're saying in Ingersoll particularly, so we don't have any empty product, that's the one place right now. It's a 401-facing building as well, and it's still sitting vacant. We do know Ingersoll is going to take off. We think it's going to be within the next five years. So when we talk about timing, then maybe that's the appropriate thing, is to look at when to phase that in, just so that we can continue to move along and find good reason to pull people further west. And keeping the, the cost down is one good way of doing that.
Counselor, Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. I think I heard the answer, but when your company was making their business plans for investment within Oxford County, was development charge exemptions a part of that calculation that, when you decided that?
Through the chair, to, to the mayor, absolutely. Absolutely. Like, these business plans have been made well in advance, and right now, in, in what the West Oxford Business Park, we're planning on building two to three buildings per year. And we've, we did forecast, because we're, you know, we, we recognize they do, they do come eventually, we figured the second half of the park would have development charges. So we figured within the next five years, development charges would come, but we need something to kick that park off right now, right? So we're looking, we try to work closely with Economic Development Department, we're trying to do our own marketing, we spend significant marketing dollars to try to get industry to this area. So we're just asking council to please look at that bylaw that you've put into place and maybe look at not removing these exemptions, not now, just not now.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak to the, come on up? And again, if you can, you can begin speaking and then sign when you're done. There should be a timer on the screen there, Frank.
There you go. Sorry, well, thank you very much for allowing me to speak here. I'm a, a business owner from the county, and I would just like to say that I urge council to consider these exemptions seriously. We're in the manufacturing industry, and we're looking to grow our business. We're from the Tilsonburg district, and we're already building in the new business park, and we're looking to buy more. And these development charges have come as quite a shock. It makes a significant difference for us. And with the economic environment we're in right now, I'd really caution the council to think about this long and hard. And the reason in, in that, why I'm saying that is, for us, manufacturing product, we're shipping a significant portion to the states, metal and rubber and plastic products. And whilst that's, that's our problem, you might say, we're also, I would- And whilst that's, that's our problem, you might say, we're also, I would like to let the county know that there are states in the U.S. that are offering green cards, exemptions, exemption to tariffs. If we were so to move our production, we employ 130 people currently and are growing. That's just, that's all I wanted to say.
Questions from council? Counselor Gilvazey.
Yes, it's going to, it's going to cost me about 315,000 extra, which we had not planned for on this, on this phase. And we have the neighboring property, which we're also looking at currently. But I certainly would be putting the brakes on that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak to the development charges exemptions? Not seeing anyone, nobody virtually. All right. Counselor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilvazey. Resolve that council adjourn the public meeting and reconvene as Oxford County Council with the warden and the chair.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counselor Gilvazey. Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And I will turn it over to Director Michaels.
Thank you, Warden. The applications before council today are for an OPA and a subdivision that are proposing the development of a larger plan of subdivision in the northeast corner of the Village Drumbo. The application before you is for the first phase of that larger plan of subdivision. And it's the second major development in Drumbo since the sewage treatment plant expansion was recently completed. So it's moving forward development in that area. Surrounding land uses consist of agricultural to the north and east and low-density residential to the west and the south. This plate shows the first phase of the residential plan of subdivision, which is shaded in gray. It proposes 62 lots, units, 47 of which will be for single-detached dwellings and the remainder for townhouse dwellings, street-fronting townhouse dwellings to be specific, and as well as a park and a stormwater management block. The subdivision will be accessed via a extension to Jarvis Street, which is shown as Street C, and then a new street that'll connect to Oxford Street, or sorry, yeah, Oxford Street East. The first phase that was chosen here was to provide the stormwater management block and the park block and to allow for servicing looping and the connection of roads, which is why it's located where it is in the context of the larger subdivision. But the overall subdivision will be 200-plus lots, units, and be a mix of single-family and townhouse dwelling units. The associated OPA will be redesigning portions of the lands from low-density residential to medium-density residential to reflect the townhouse blocks and open space for those blocks that are for stormwater management and park. Similarly, the zoning bylaws is proposing appropriate residential zones and open space zones to recognize those same blocks and facilitate the plan of subdivision. A number of technical studies have been submitted to support this development, and those have been addressed through both the design of the subdivision and the conditions of draft plan approval. Several neighbors have expressed concerns with respect to this plan of subdivision, but between the applicant and the planner, Dustin Robson, we believe those concerns have been addressed and will be addressed through the conditions of draft plan approval and the design of the subdivision. In terms of local council perspective, they supported the zone change application in principle and recommended support of the OPA and the draft plan of subdivision. So in summary, planning staff are recommending approval of both the subdivision application for the first phase and the open, or sorry, the official plan amendment, which is attached to this report. So from there, I'll be here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from council for the planner on the report? Counselor Schaefer, then Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Can you tell, it may be in the report here, but what is the density of this proposal then that we're ending up with?
Yeah, I don't know if it's, if it's super overt in the report, but the density of the first phase, I believe, is roughly 22 units per net hectare. But overall, depending on how many townhouses are built in the subsequent phases, it's closer to 26 units per net hectare. And what I would say is, in the context of Drumbo, 25 units per net hectare was kind of the target, given that there are servicing limitations there. So it's kind of a balance between using the land efficiently and not exceeding the servicing capacity.
Deputy Warden? Any other questions for the planner? Not seeing any, thank you. Are there any members of the public, either here in person or virtually, who wish to speak to the application? Not seeing any. Counselor Accione.
Thank you. Through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Palmer. Resolve that council adjourn the public meeting and reconvene as Oxford County Council with the warden and the chair.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And consideration of report CP 2025-16. In Counselor Peterson's absence, Counselor Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Palmer. Resolve the recommendations contained in report CP 2025-16, titled "Applications for Official Plan Amendment and Draft Plan of Subdivision", OP 2106-1, and SB 2102-1. Tiffany Development Corporation be adopted.
Is there any discussion? Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. I know this has been on the books for a long time of wanting to have this land developed. And I think that county staff did a wonderful job of working with the applicant to come to a solution where you'll have development happen, but the controls are in place to make sure it happens in a manner that can be serviced and be successful. So certainly that was a concern when I started reading the report, knowing the history. So I think that those have been fully addressed and that as time goes by, there's sufficient control to make sure that the development only happens when those services are available, to make sure that everybody who lives there has a good experience, as well as the rest of the community of Drumbo is not put at disadvantage because of this development. So I can support it and will be supporting it.
Any other discussion? It's almost like when you have good policies in place, they actually work. Any other discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And then delegations, presentations, and consideration thereof. And item 6.1 is Boralex. I'll welcome you up to the podium. And there will be a timer on the screen for you. And I will turn it over to you.
Okay, now the mic is on. Thank you again. My name is Asia Rania, Senior Development Manager for Boralex. And I'm here to talk to you about the Oxford Battery Energy Storage Project. So some of you may have seen this presentation before. I apologize if this is redundant, but happy to see you again. And for those that are new, thank you for coming and taking the time. So first, just a bit about Boralex. We're a Canadian-based company, and we've been operating in Ontario for about 10 years. We have 30 years of experience of developing, building, and operating renewable energy and now energy storage projects with over 3 gigawatts of projects installed across North America and in France and other places in Europe. I think one of the most important things to take away from this slide is that Boralex, we are a developer, but we are also a long-term operator. So we don't just build a project and flip it. We're here in the community long-term. We consider ourselves to be good neighbors in the community and support the community where we can with our projects. And this project would be no different. A little bit of context in terms of why are we proposing this Oxford Battery Energy Storage Project? Essentially, the grid operator, independent electricity system operator, has forecasted needs for the energy, for the electricity grid with respect to energy and power. And this has manifested through requests for proposals that have happened in the last couple of years and will continue to happen because of the lack of energy and power capacity on the grid to make sure that we have a reliable electricity grid to essentially keep the lights on when everyone's using it and demand is increasing. We were, Boralex was fortunate enough to have been awarded two projects previous in the previous request for proposals, our Tilbury Battery Storage Project and our Hagersville Battery Storage Project. And those projects are currently in construction and should be in a commercial operation by the end of this year. Similarly, we are also grateful that Boralex was awarded also in partnership, this project is in partnership with Six Nations of the Grand River, our First Nations partner, 50/50 equity partner in the project. We were awarded in May of this year, the Oxford Battery Storage Project, which is a 125-megawatt project, which is kind of like the mill project with respect to Hagersville, which is a little bit bigger, and Tilbury, which is a little bit smaller. And we're now in the, after being awarded, we're in the phase of permits, approvals, and things like that, which I'll overview in a little bit. Apologies for the format of the slide. I'm not sure what happened, but I'll just verbalize this. This is a sort of overview map of the project and where it is. So we talked about why this project is important. We like to put projects where it makes sense. Our Hagersville project is an industrial zone parcel in an old Army air camp base in Hagersville, Ontario. Tilbury project is amongst transmission lines and substations and railway corridors, industrial zone parcels. So this project being an aggregate pit made a lot of sense from a lot of different perspectives and stakeholders as well, in terms of marrying different infrastructure together. Putting a battery project in an aggregate pit, which is in an area aggregate pit that is non-operational right now, they've extracted to the level they need to extract at this time. And that's where the main facility is, in the red hashed area, just on the eastern border of the aggregate pit, which borders, it's in southwest Oxford, township is southwest Oxford, and it borders the city of Woodstock, where the mill street's on the just east of that. There would be a transmission line, a 1.5-kilometer transmission line approximately, that would go north, as you can see the red line and the yellow line, cross the, what is currently an agricultural field, into crossing Carn Road and to connect to an existing Hydro 1, 115 KV transmission line, where we would inject power into the grid. The, most of the transmission line is underground. We originally were talking about an overhead line. We received feedback from the community and we've sort of changed our plans and put most of the line underground to help support the comments of the community. The, being, having a project in an aggregate pit makes sense as we're not using, we're minimizing environmental impact. We're not taking away, we're repurposing non-arable land, essentially. And the fact that the project is in the aggregate pit, you have this 100-foot berm, which is also a mitigant with respect to sound as well. We have regulations to make sure that the sound of the project meets certain thresholds. So it made a lot of sense for the project to be there. We've been discussing this project at council. We were, last week, we're at City of Woodstock Council. We were also at Southwest Oxford, Township of Southwest Oxford Council. And we're also engaging with the community as well with respect to open houses. The last open house was at the arena in Woodstock. We're engaging with where some of the residents came out. We're engaging with Woodford Lodge, the hospital, and other stakeholders in the area so that we can share the project and have them answer any questions about the project. This is no different in terms of here being in Oxford County in advance of some applications that we'll be submitting, which I'll review shortly. I'll review right now, actually, because the slide is up. So this slide just overviews the phases of the project. So as I mentioned, once we were awarded a contract by the grid operator, now we're in the permits and approvals phase, which is the leftmost bucket there. We're doing things like class environmental assessment, screening with Ministry of Environment, Conservation of Parks, importantly. And as a sort of a heads up with respect to this council and also Township of Southwest Oxford, we'll be submitting a zoning bylaw amendment and official plan amendment to check off the back box in terms of land use for putting a storage project where we're proposing to put it. In addition, engaging with Ministry of Natural Resources and doing other things like environmental compliance application with the Ministry of Environment, Conservation and Parks, which is about stormwater. That's the phase we're in right now. So once we sort of cross our Ts and dot our Is, we're in the construction phase, where we're leveraging best practices and all the latest codes and standards in terms of making sure we're constructing a project that's safe, traffic management plans, you know, erosion and sediment control, et cetera. Then there would be the operational phase where the project's operational for about 21 years as per our contract with the grid operator. And we would have emergency response plans, environmental monitoring, et cetera. And part of the permitting, before I go to the next slide, part of the permitting, as I mentioned, is the zoning bylaw amendment and the official plan amendment. So with that amendment, there are technical reports that are inputted as well through the permitting process. One of those reports is the Community Risk Assessment, which was a report that Oxford County had asked us to do, and we were happy to do it. Essentially, the Community Risk Assessment was looking at potential impacts to health and safety in the community and ways to avoid, minimize, or mitigate those impacts. So the Community Risk Assessment looked at things like, you know, we're, how we're dealing with the potential impacts to groundwater, how we're dealing with potential impacts on the sound side with respect to being at or below the thresholds that we're required to be from a ministry regulations standpoint, and things like what happens if there's an emergency event with respect to fire, and what does that mean? At the end, this CRA is being finalized. It'll be submitted in the application shortly when it goes in. At the end of the day, the, our project will not pose any undue risk to the community. And this report sort of outlines the specifics of that and the details of that. It's important to say that battery energy storage systems have developed and matured significantly over the last five or 10 years. It's essentially night and day in terms of the projects that we're installing right now, even the ones that we're building right now, the other projects, which includes this one Oxford project as well, in terms of getting to a level where the industry has learned significantly, which has input and fed back into the codes, regulations, and standards that the manufacturers have to abide by, which means that we're picking safe systems in addition to codes and standards in terms of how we design systems, et cetera. And this is factored into significantly allowing us to build safer systems with, for the community. So this is a slide talking about that. It's a good segue in terms of commitment to safety. And this is focused on fire safety. And there's basically different buckets here with respect to safety. The prevention bucket is a big deal. So, you know, we, at Boralex, we're not experts in fire, but we actually, we're leveraging our consultants, Energy Safety Response Group, who's on the line right now. We have various team members in the room as well if we need to answer some specific questions. But these are individuals that, ex-firefighters, that have been involved in the industry. They're doing testing on batteries and are involved in codes and regulations in terms of updating them. So they're the ones that are helping us with respect to also collaborating with the fire departments. It also means, prevention also means picking batteries that are safe with respect to codes and standards so that we can't just pick any old battery. We have to make sure we're picking something that makes sense from a safety perspective and a tested perspective. The other bucket here is, which is also part of monitoring, is monitoring, is part of prevention, sorry, is monitoring and detection. So we're not, this is not a project where you sort of set it and leave it. It's very closely monitored, 24/7. Boralex is a control center that monitors all of our projects across North America. Our battery supplier would have a control center that monitors like specifics of the batteries with respect to like monitoring the battery management system, any thresholds that are exceeded, automatic shut-offs, making sure the, you know, HVAC systems, fans and ventilation are making the batteries in the right temperature to be safe. And this, all these preventative layers helps us get to a point where, you know, we don't have an issue. We mitigate any potential issues in the future. But just like we have in society, we build safe cars, we build safe roadways, and there is rules. And for the most part, everything is good. There's always a situation, though, that may come up where there is an emergency. And therefore, you know, we're responsible for helping with respect to emergency response plans through our expert third-party, ex-firefighters. They're supporting us in terms of preparing an emergency response plan, which is a recommendation from the Community Risk Assessment. This response plan is not just we do it ourselves in our offices, you know, locked away. This is actually in collaboration with the fire department. So we've been meeting with the fire chiefs regularly. We've had a couple of meetings with them already. And they're part of this process in terms of developing this emergency response plan, reviewing the designs, and making sure the roads have the right turning radius or the adapters are correct on the water tank, or whatever we need in order for them to be comfortable with the project in case there is a worst-case situation. to be comfortable with the project in case there is a worst-case situation. That also includes us helping with respect to training of the fire department and their personnel for this project before it becomes operational, so they're the ultimate check-off in terms of emergency response. Just to wrap up with respect to timeline, so there's a lot that's already happened in these projects, to get to this point where we're able to talk about it, and there's still a lot to be done, we have to get permits and approvals, for example. That's part of the zoning bylaw and official plan amendment that we'll be submitting shortly, that will come before councils. We're also finishing detailed design, we have a preliminary design, we'll be finishing detailed design this year, first half of this year, we'll be constructing, no earlier than the fall of this year, and then we'd be operational no earlier than next year, so it's about a year, a year and a half in terms of construction timeline, where we'd be operational, and then at that time, providing the value to the grid in terms of essentially keeping the lights on in a short, in a short way to say it, with respect to when people come home, turn off, turn on their air conditioners and their lights. I didn't mention this before, but the point of the battery is, it's basically like backup power, so the battery would charge during the evening, when no one's using it or no one really needs it, and then the battery would discharge its energy, 125 megawatts for four-hour duration during the day, during peak times, when everyone needs the electricity or the power. And that's essentially the purpose of this battery, is to provide, to shift the energy and power to times of the day where it's actually needed, and that's why it's a reliability project, and this is one of many projects that are providing reliability electricity grid. So that's in conclusion of the short presentation. I thank you for your time, and I'm here to answer myself or my colleagues any questions you may have about the project.
Thank you. Questions from council? Counselor Gilvey.
Thank you, through you, Warden. You had said something about a 20-year contract, is that essentially the life, like the lifespan of the batteries, or what exactly is the lifespan of the batteries?
Yeah, the contract is just shy of 21 years, and that would be an approximate lifespan of the batteries. During the contract term, we would, during the contract term, there's energy capacity that degrades in the batteries, we would have to add a certain amount of batteries to keep our contractual obligation, and that's just the nature of the technology, but that's essentially lifespan. So after the 21-year contract, the plan would be to decommission the site.
Through you, Warden, and what's involved in decommissioning?
Decommissioning would be removing all the material that's on-site, putting the site back to where it's original use, so in the aggregate pit, it would be back to use of an aggregate pit if the licensee wishes to continue that extraction for whatever reason. If there's still farmland where the transmission line is, then put it back to be able to use as farmland, as examples.
May continue, Warden, through you. Where do the, there's obviously toxic chemicals that form part of the batteries, so what happens to them upon decommissioning?
The batteries are, upon decommissioning, or at any event, the batteries will be returned, could be returned directly to the supplier, or recycled. I think that there's, there's actually a really strong burgeoning industry with respect to recycling. If you can imagine, energy storage like these batteries, this is a very small component of the amount of batteries that society uses, especially going forward, whether it's in our laptops or phones or in electric vehicles, and the constituents, in this case, the lithium iron phosphate that are in these batteries, they're of value to the industry with respect to reusing that material to avoid having to mine it, to refine it again, so we envision that there'll be a lot, a lot of recycling on these batteries particularly, especially in, you know, 21 years, so the majority of the chemical constituents could be recycled, and that's the way the industry is moving forward.
One final question through you, Warden, you discussed working with local fire departments. If, if battery storage catches on fire, essentially, they have to just let them burn, correct? Like the heat is extremely high, and also, we wouldn't want to put firefighters in harm's way, and so do they just let them burn, and are there toxic chemicals that would be burning into the atmosphere in a case such as that?
Yeah, that's a great answer, and I can answer that question, but I'll invite Nick Petracas, who's a part of the Environmental Safety Resource Group, if you're on the line, Nick, if you heard the question.
Thank you, thank you, Warden, through you, Asier, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Yep, so, yeah, through you, Warden, thank you for the question. So we are Energy Safety Response Group, we are the fire safety consultants that are working with Boralex to provide the training to the local fire department and also develop our emergency response procedures. And as Asier had mentioned, the emergency response procedures, we do in-person training with the department, but as you mentioned, our motto, our experience through industry in responding to a number of fires, and also having the full-scale fire test lab at our own facilities, the, what we call the self-consumption approach is the best. So that being said, the fire department still is capable and available to conduct defensive firefighting operations, so they will be monitoring the scene, monitoring the incident, and ideally, the way that these systems are designed with a lot of the really robust full-scale fire testing requirements, they've shown that they can consume themselves without affecting any of the adjacent enclosures. So a large-scale, what we call a worst-case scenario fire, where we have a full enclosure consumption, will be isolated to just one individual battery enclosure, rather than propagating throughout the whole facility. And our emergency response plans take that into account and also give guidance to the first responders on where they should stage and how they should operate at a facility. But yes, as far as toxic smoke with any fire, whether it's a battery energy storage system fire, or with a residential structure fire, or some sort of similar commercial use, any sort of smoke component or off-gassing is going to have a toxic, you know, component to that. That's why in our emergency response plan, we do provide the guidance to the first responders on what gas monitoring they can conduct on-site to get an assessment of the facility, and also just sort of the favorable facility siting, and, you know, what's going to be shown through the community risk assessment, that any impacts of a fire in this facility are not expected to propagate outside the facility boundaries.
Deputy Warden Petrie and Counselor Racioli.
Thank you very much, I fully understand we'll be having some planning applications come forward, so certainly a lot of my other questions will be answered then, but just trying to get the, there's a picture at the beginning of, is that, is that what an enclosure looks like? Is that, is that the interpretation of a closure? And how many would this site, how many of those, if that's the case, how many would those, this site house of those?
Right, yeah, the picture is that, at the beginning, I think that's a, if I recall correctly, that's a picture of a pilot project that was built in, let's say circa 2017 in France, one of our very first energy storage projects, and that's like an old-style way of building projects where you have kind of like a C can container, and you put the batteries inside. Right now, the way we build projects is they're purpose-built modules that are approximately around the same size of a small C can, depending on the specific battery, so they're purpose-built for the specific case, which increases safety and efficiency and performance, obviously. And for this site, at operations, we would have about 117 of these modules.
Okay. Also, the, your permitting side, you're just talking about the class environmental assessment process, that's been completed, or you're in the process of that?
Thank you, and through you, Warden, for the previous questions and this question, counselor, or deputy Warden. Yes, the class environmental assessment process, the screening process, and so we're, let's say at the tail end of that process, so we'll be finishing that up.
Okay, and that information will be available as part of the applications coming forward to county?
Yes.
Okay. All the other information, like the studies and stuff that have gone, is that available to the public, or is that, if so, could you provide where people can access that information?
We do have a website for the project, and we make some things available, we can provide some sort of reports as necessary, short-form summaries, et cetera, as, when available, depending on what the need is out there, for sure.
Okay. And the last question, if I may, Warden, through you, you did mention in your presentation noise, what kind of noise is generated from these types of facilities?
Right, so these, we have the batteries themselves, the purpose-built modules that I mentioned, there would be heating, ventilation, air control, so fans, for example, the inverters might have some sounds attached to them, the transformers would have fans for cooling, et cetera, so those are examples of where sound emissions could be had at the, at the facility, exactly. And then the regulation is with respect to the ministry, we have to be below certain thresholds at receptors, which are, you know, people's houses or other buildings in the community, and we have to submit that to the ministry to make sure that we're meeting those thresholds, and so by the time you get to, you know, hundreds of meters away, that there would be no issue with respect to receptors and sound. Thank you.
Counselor Racioli.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Deputy Warden asked most of the questions, I was going to ask you as well, the three major concerns I've always had with this project, of course, is the fire safety, which I know you've been in great discussions with them, and the module design was just explained. Next one being the noise, I've never asked this, so I'm curious, would these be any louder than, say, typical operations that have been there right now? Have we done any of those tests yet, to have an idea?
Yeah, that's a good point, because, and that's the reason why we want to place, you know, this infrastructure, this battery, in a place where there's already existing infrastructure, so I think they would be at similar levels in terms of the operations, potentially, but we, what we do is we, we have to meet thresholds during the day and at night as well, so there's like a higher bar with respect to our project in terms of meeting the thresholds to make sure that we're not impacting the community, and that includes, you know, in the middle of the night, not disturbing people, and that's what we have to meet in terms of threshold.
If I can continue, the last point, of course, is the groundwater, that really hasn't been discussed too much here, just if there is a fire, that was brought up by Counselor Gauzzi, where does that water go? Because, again, through public meetings and other discussions we've had, you state, you keep it cool around the other areas if we had to with the fire department, so where does that water go?
Yeah, that's a great question, thank you, Counselor Mayor, through you, Warden. And allow me to provide a little bit of context, and I'll be happy to answer your question, and I just want to provide context in terms of how we would get to that situation, in terms of an emergency event, so, you know, we're, we're doing our job in terms of picking batteries that are safe, we're doing our job in terms of building a site that's safe with respect to latest codes and standards, we have a robust preventative maintenance program, which is the purpose of, is to first and foremost, keep the system safe, and then, you know, have an efficient system that can perform its contractual obligations. And then there's the monitoring and detection, which is basically looking at the site 24/7, whether it's automatic shut-offs or manual intervention to prevent anything from happening. And then if there is an incident and fire is on-site, we have this defensive mechanism that you alluded to in terms of just keeping the adjacent units cool and not putting water directly on the affected unit to let it consume itself, as we've been talking about. So after all those things, those things all have to happen in terms of sequence to get into that situation, and then even if there is water runoff on the container that's affected, which is not the best practice in terms of putting water on the container, there, if there is water runoff from that container for whatever reason, then to answer your question, we're designing a stormwater system that also has to be approved by the Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks to deal with secondary containment, just in case, if we have all these ifs that happen, in the event that something happens, we have secondary containment, so we have containment underneath the battery modules, and so there's catch basins that, as they are able to hold the water, so if there's an incident, we can basically, the water could be held in the catch basin, there's an emergency shut-off valve that keeps the catch basin water there, and the pipes, et cetera, underneath the batteries, and that prevents the water from going into the infiltration pond, if we needed to do that, and we could basically test the water and pump it out if necessary, if there's any issue with that water, so that's the mitigation that's inherent. But in normal operations, with respect to like stormwater and rain, you know, the water would fall on the containers in the project, just like it would fall on your house, and it would go into the environment. In this case, the stormwater is managed through infiltration ponds around the area that will manage the amount of stormwater that we designed for, that will infiltrate into the ground or evaporate, and then we have that extra layer of just in case from an emergency perspective, if we are in that particular situation, and I hope that answered your question.
Any other questions? Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Next delegation is Daryl Hall and Evan McHugh regarding the extension of municipal water and wastewater services policy. I'll ask you to come up, and I believe the microphone is on, and there should be a timer on the screen for you, and I'll remind you, as you've delegated before, to stick to new material for council to hear.
Good morning, everyone, my name's Daryl Hall, pleased to be back with council, and before I read my speaking notes, I just want council to keep in mind the presentation we just had about developmental charges and how they impact corporations and the exemptions that they get, and what that would mean if the exemptions were removed. So today, I'm here with a deep sense of concern regarding the newly proposed motion mandating hookups for any resident with a septic system over 10 or 20 years old. While I appreciate council's efforts to address infrastructure concerns, this proposal as it stands is both unreasonable and financially burdensome to many residents. I have spoken to most of the residents on the road, and while there are varying opinions on what a fair resolution is, we have all agreed that the current recommendation by county staff is not fair and places undue financial strain on residents. Having watched the last council meeting, there seemed to be some confusion from counselors regarding the capital costs, i.e. running the line past our property versus the hookup cost. I want to be clear, we are only speaking about the hookup cost today. Septic systems are designed to last between 30 and 50 years. Imposing a hookup rate, an arbitrary rate of 10 to 20 years disregards the actual lifespan of these systems, forcing homeowners to incur significant expenses prematurely. This is not just an inconvenience, it is an undue financial strain on families who have functioning systems that could serve them well for decades to come. As a reminder, hookup costs and decommissioning a septic tank could cost residents as much as $15,000 to $20,000, this is not considering the added landscaping or internal plumbing that would be required. The cost of mandatory hookups combined with infrastructure charges will be overwhelming. Some, many homeowners simply can't afford this sudden financial burden. This concern was clearly highlighted in our delegation from residents at the last council meeting. It is imperative that council listens to the voices of our community and considers a real-life, considers the real-life impact of the policy. According to Statistics Canada, household credit market debt and household disposal income is at all-time lows and highs this year. From the last council meeting, we heard that staff are not proposing any changes to the current process of the mandatory connection date, being established at a minimum of one year, one post-construction. What is the reason Oxford County is not proposing changes to the current process? Which municipalities is the report referencing? When were these bylaws adopted? Without proper context, sources, or facts, how do we know that we are not following outdated policies that were adopted 10 or 20 years ago? Is that policy still appropriate for the current financial burdens that all residents in our province are facing? This is critical information for you as council to make an informed decision. Just because other regions are doing something, doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. We presented a very recent case from Belleville Council during our last delegation, where council supported a motion in February 2024 not to force existing homeowners to hook up to city water and service sewer services be extended past their properties to make way for new development, as most counselors agreed that forcing changes on existing homeowners was unfair and simply not affordable. Belleville Council Taylor Asop said, "We'd be asking citizens who may be just scraping by to put up extra money to connect when they don't need it and certainly won't be using it in the future." Another counselor, Chris Mallett, said he didn't like the idea of homeowners on well or septic paying for a connection when they know they'll never use it. This is an important decision for council, residents want to ensure that you have access to current bylaws, which have been updated because of the financial environment we're living in. Today's financial uncertainty places additional risks on all Ontarians. We are faced with We are faced with financial turbulence, which is expected to continue at least for the next four years. It is unreasonable to, sorry, it is reasonable to expect material costs and construction costs to rise as much as 25% if tariffs are implemented on both sides of the border. This is the wrong time to add to people's fears. As you may have heard yesterday, Ingersoll's largest employer announced its first rounds of layoffs. We have heard from a number of councillors who have septic systems on their own property, and they know firsthand how well they work. A more balanced approach to suggested, was suggested by one council member, allowing residents to provide an inspection report from a certified service technician, septic technician, confirming that their system is in good working condition within the first year of capital completion. This compromise ensures that systems are functioning properly without unnecessarily, without unnecessary financial burdens on residents. It is a reasonable and fair solution that respects both the needs of the community and council's objectives. While we acknowledge the necessity of contributing to our shared costs of the infrastructure, we firmly oppose the mandatory nature of the proposed hookup policy. A more equitable approach would be to permit residents to opt-in to hookup when it is financially feasible to, for them, such as when, for the sale of their home or for a system failure. If the capital costs are covered, I don't understand the need to force residents to hook up. It costs the region nothing extra to allow residents to keep their own system. We are not asking for the moon, we're asking for time. Time between large bills, time to pay off the initial capital investment, and time to save up for the associated hookups. We urge you to consider this motion carefully and adopt a more flexible and fair approach that truly considers the financial impact on our residents. A mandatory hookup within 10 to 20 years of completion of the infrastructure would allow people to plan for this expense, and it would also align with when all or most current septic systems would reach the end of their life expectancy. Let's work together to find a solution that balances infrastructure needs with the economic realities faced by our community. As you said in our first delegation, there is no rush. The infrastructure is not expected to be complete until late 2025.
I would simply like to reaffirm and summarize some of the statements made here during this presentation, specifically that the capital costs would still be recovered with implementation of an opt-in policy when it comes to mandatory hookups. While there are communities in Ontario that do not pass on these infrastructure charges directly to individual residents during service expansion, we recognize the need for this in our area. This being said, our recommendation of allowing residential homeowners to provide an inspection report from a certified, certified septic service and confirming their system is in good working order would alleviate any of your risk while still forcing connection upon system failure or the sale of the home. Compared with a mandatory hookup at an arbitrary time period of tank life, disregards the actual lifespan of these systems, which had previously mentioned to be around 40 to 50 years. This compromise ensures that systems are functioning properly without imposing unnecessary burdens on residents while ensuring the development can continue as planned within the current guidelines. Thank you all for your consideration for the above-mentioned recommendations and listening to us and Daryl here today.
Thanks. Questions from council for the delegation? Deputy Ward.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Just wanted to ask the delegation, are you aware of Section 11.5 of the, the policy that's being considered, which is the financial hardship policy for those available? And sure you are, and I'd like to hear your feedback on that. The reasoning behind that is I've heard from your delegation that financial hardship is a major concern, and certainly I think that staff took that into consideration. This has been one of those policies that's been in there, but certainly want to hear your feedback on that as a mechanism that has been brought in to help deal with that.
So I guess my response would be the definition of financial hardship. Someone's financial hardship today may look very different than someone's financial hardship in six months, if they're laid off. If someone is over the income threshold today, that doesn't mean that they don't also have financial pressures in terms of disabled family or children or, or aging parents that they have to look after. What the proposed motion calls for in terms of a 10 to 20-year life expectancy, well, it is beneficial to those who have a newer system, it burdens those who have a working system, again, that could last another 40 years.
Any other questions from council for the delegation? Not seeing any, thank you. And Counsel Mayberry.
Thank you, Warden. Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. Resolve the information provided in Delegation 6.1 and 6.2 on the open meeting agenda of February 12, 2025 be received.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And consideration of correspondence, Counsel Raciuni.
Thank you. Move by myself, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. Resolve the correspondence item 7.1 on the open meeting agenda of February 12, 2025 be received.
Is there any discussion? It's sort of unusual for these items to be put on here. Normally, this correspondence comes and staff deal with it, and we move on. I specifically asked if this could be put on here because I wanted to thank a few people. So first of all, I want to thank C.A.O. Adley, Acting Director Smith, and Manager Hamaleki. You know, we adopted a master housing strategy, housing-for-all policy, 100% housed commitment. We adopted a advocacy strategy, and I can tell you that my delegation to Minister Calandro is basically that our staff have uncovered the i's and dotted them, uncovered the t's and crossed them. We've met with your, your housing staff multiple times, we've met with P.A. Ray, and we're ready to go. And I was done in about two minutes, because staff had done all the work that we have asked them to do in the policies. And he, he repeatedly put his hand on our application there, he did all but wink at me, said he couldn't tell me anything today, but sure enough, you know, less than a week later, approved the $500,000 for affordable housing and $200,000 for encampment response. I also want to thank and congratulate council because we adopted those policies. We asked for them, we considered them from staff, we adopted them, we allocated the resources to get it done. I've checked repeatedly with Rebecca on this. We have never, as Oxford County, before qualified for more than our normal allocation of that last mile funding, until now. So I think that this is a direct result of, of policies that this council has asked our staff for, staff have advised us on, and we have decided to adopt, and we're reaping the rewards of it already. And I wanted it on the agenda just to highlight that to, to all of us, frankly, because you can get things done when you, when you, when you decide to put the effort into getting them done. So, anyone else? Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Warden, through you. There's one person that obviously it may be awkward to thank, but yourself. I had the opportunity to go in that delegation, which staff had prepared excellently for, but our warden was ferociously prepared to come out with nothing less than the positive answer. And certainly, your preparedness and your advocacy in that room was the icing on the cake, and I think that that deserves credit as well. So, thank you.
It is awkward, you're right. Thank you. Anybody else before I call the question? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. I'm going to suggest we take a, a 10-minute break and come back at, say, that'd be, let's say, 11:05.
Call the meeting back to order 11-06. Deputy Warden Petrie. Hold on one second, Deputy Warden. Deputy Warden.
Through you, Warden. I'd like to move the following motion that consideration of unfinished business, item 9.1, be brought forward on the meeting agenda after item 7.1, and Counselor Palmer has agreed to second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. So, item 9, unfinished business, 9.1, CS 2025-03, Extension of Municipal Water and Wastewater Services Policy, and the motion that was deferred on January 22, 2025, was that the amendments to extension of Municipal Water and Wastewater Services Policy, formerly Water and Sewer Services Financing Policy, 6.05, as set out Attachment 1 to report CS 2025-03 be approved effective January 22, 25, and the motion that was deferred was moved by Mayberry, seconded by Gilvasey, resolved that the recommendation contained in report CS 2025-03 titled Extension of Municipal Water and Wastewater Services Policy be adopted, and that is the motion that is currently on the floor that was deferred from January 22. Is there any discussion? Deputy Warden Petrie.
Through you, Warden. I'd like to move an amendment to the item on the floor, which is seconded by Counselor Schaefer. Whereas the County of Oxford Official Plan Policies for Water and Wastewater Servicing speak to the need for mandatory connections when extending service to areas where development has already taken place with prior services. No, just jumping here. Just one second. And whereas some of those private services have been installed or replaced in a recent timeframe, and those property owners may wish to use those investments for a reasonable time to recoup some of the value of those investments, as well as adequate time to be able to fund those investments prior to incurring more costs to connect to county services, and where there's an opportunity to balance both items and create an equitable policy that will allow residents an option to defer mandatory connections to county services for a reasonable period, that would allow their goals to be addressed, as well as the county's goals of their official plan to be accomplished within a reasonable timeframe, and whereas Section 11.3, the current policy speaks to ensuring that deferrals only apply to property, properly working systems, therefore be it resolved that Section 11.6 of Attachment 1, Extension of Municipal Water and Wastewater Services Policy be amended as follows. 11.6, replacement of private services within 20 years of installation. 11.6.1, property owners may apply for deferral if one of the impacted services was installed within 20 years from the date of the bill-out bylaw reference in Section 5.2.2. Property owners required to submit proof of installation date. 11.6.2, the deferral will be limited to mandatory connection date only and will not apply to the capital billing fees under this deferral option. 11.6.3, the term of the deferral shall not exceed... Sorry, there's just a confusion of... Shall be to the maximum of 20 years. Thank you, Counselor Palmer. From the service was installed and will be confirmed by the treasurer. 11.6.4, extensions to deferrals granted under Section 11.6 will not be offered. This does not prevent the property owner from requesting an extension based on financial hardship, 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 as outlined under Section 11.5, through the submission of a subsequent application.
Deputy Warden Petrie is the mover of the amendment. Do you wish to speak to the amendment?
I do, and so a lot of thought and time into this on how to... Trying to, at the last delegation that we received on this, we heard that a number of people have installed a number of new systems, and certainly I felt that that had struck a bell with council as far as a, and certainly myself, with the need to, there is time that takes to pay off those systems and be able to have time to be able to get some lifetime out of it. It's certainly not a full use of the system, that's not there, but there is a need for balancing. We do have policies within the county. We have needs to make those work and reach those goals, so there needs to be a balance there. When I looked, last time I talked about the equity portion of this, what's being proposed in the current, that was proposed is that there would be up to 10 years, and that would be based off of, if the system was one-year-old, it was, you could get 10 years and then it would be 11, but if it was, if it was, you know, nine, then it would be, you know, you would get 10 years and it'd be up to 19. The problem with, this is the most equitable solution I could think of as far as the installation date. Everybody gets a minimum, the same minimum or maximum amount of time to be able to use that service, or minimum amount of time. It doesn't matter if we're, we heard from the delegation today that they're, would wish to have something that could go on till they want to change the system, or 20 years is what they're talking about from mandatory connection from the time. I think at that time what we would do is we would hear people coming forward and being, well, I just put my system in 20 years and I only got 20 years. Well, other people got the ability to use theirs for 50 or 60 years, or 40 years, and I want the same amount of use out of my system. There's nothing perfect in this, but again, it's from a balancing perspective and trying to address some of those concerns while also not ignoring the issues and the goals that are contained in our policies that we have here and the goals we're trying to achieve. So, I think this does that, and I will certainly open for discussion.
Counselor Schaefer is the seconder of the amendment. Do you wish to speak to the amendment?
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Deputy Warden Petrie is correct. There's no perfect amendment, and there's no perfect time for anybody to have to hook up, but I do think this is an acceptable compromise compared to the original motion, so I will accept it.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Deputy Warden.
Sorry, I forgot to mention too, we did hear the argumentative financial hardship, and that's true. That, these can be, I've personally gone through this twice, with different properties, it's just timing, but I think there is that ability there from different deferral options, including this one, or through financial hardship, and certainly from the capital perspective, guaranteed option for financing up to 10 years, to try to address those, as well as timeframe on this. By addressing it early, this project is not slated to be completed before the end of the year, and then we'll have, there's be time before that mandatory bylaw comes forward. So, there will be time to plan, and then if there's deferral options there, that gives further time, whether it be hardship or under this. So, there's nothing that's guaranteed. It's always hard to make a perfect policy, certainly not just making it in the consideration just of the delegation, but also of countywide, and how do we, how do we make sure that it applies to everyone across the county. So, now I will finish. Thank you.
Any other, Counselor T.
Through the chair. Yeah, I'm not going to support it. I don't like the word mandatory, and I don't see where there's any issue with Oxford, with the county, if they don't hook up. The infrastructure is already paid for, so the only cost would be when they hook up, so we're not out anything. As far as I'm concerned, they should be able to use their septic system, what they're paying for, until the lifespan of the septic system, whatever date that may be. When that expires, then they hook up. I do not like the mandatory, and I won't support it.
Any other discussion? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Warden. Just to point a clarification, because I don't have the amendment written in front of me, the amendment does not change the financial hardship clause. Is that correct?
I, my interpretation, so the deputy warden is shaking his head that no, it does not, and my interpretation certainly is that the amend, the proposed amendment does not propose to change the financial hardship portion of the recommended policy.
Okay, thank you. That's what I thought. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counselor Mayberry.
Not so much discussion, but a question on the actual amendment. If you look at 11.6.1, property owners may apply for deferral if one of the impacted services was installed within 20 years from the date of bill-out bylaw referenced in Section 5.2.2. So, let's say that I put my water system, or the county hooked my water up today, or five years ago, let's say, but my sewer system is 40 years old. One of the systems is within 20 years. Do I get another 15 years before I have to hook up the septic? I think just the way it's worded, you could argue, or at least I could argue, that that's what that says.
So, I'm going to, I'm going to suggest, I'm going to suggest that we ask for an answer from staff on how they would interpret that amendment as it is written in terms of policy implementation, and then, then maybe circle back to the mover and seconder if that interpretation matches their intent, and if, then we'll take it from there then.
So, through the warden, that would be correct. If one service is installed within five years and the other one is 40, they could potentially get that longer period on that other system, provided it is still in good working order. So, provided that older system remains in good working order, that deferral would still apply.
So, question then, just a confirmation for the mover and seconder, is that interpretation, is staff's interpretation of your motion, is that your intent of the amendment? Deputy Warden.
Just want to follow up on that with a question around, through you, Warden, that why is one system tied to another? To, how to work for the deferral. Water system's a separate system from wastewater. What's the, what's the further reasoning behind the connection of those two?
So, through the warden, generally, I think when a private homeowner is installing services from the road to the house, the similar corridor would be used to install both sanitary and water up, so the intent was to ensure that the homeowners only had to dig their front yard or yard, wherever it is, up once in order to make that connection happen.
Any other discussion? Counselor Gilvasey.
Through you, Warden. Sorry, I don't understand this. Like, I don't understand the 11.6.1 clause, and I also think that the clause 11.6.3 contradicts 11.6.1.
Sorry, is there a question there? I'm just trying to help.
Yeah, I need, I need a better explanation of understanding this. So, this 11.6.1 says property owners may apply for deferral. Okay, so define deferral. Is this a financial deferral, or is this deferring not hooking up?
So, I'll just, sort of, my understanding is that the deferral is a deferral of the hookup. That's the intention of the motion, and that would be how staff would interpret that, right?
That is correct.
Deferral of the actual hookup, not the paying of the bill, not the financing, but the deferral of the physical connection.
Okay, so it's a deferral of the hookup. But this is within 20 years of the date of bill-out, not the date of the installation of the system. That's not, that's not what this says.
Deputy Warden.
Just provided for clarity, Warden, through you. So, 6.6.1 says property owners may apply for deferral if one of the impacted services was installed within 20 years from the date of the bill-out, the bylaw references, meaning that from, if the, if it is January 1, 2026 of the bill-out, if the service was installed, 20 years, anytime in that timeframe, going back to, we're in 2026, so it'd be, you know, sorry, my math's horrible. Thank you, 206. Then, that timeframe, they'd be eligible for a deferral. That being said, 11.3, sorry, 6.3 says the term of the deferral shall not exceed, be, to be a maximum of 20 years from when the service was digged out. So, the timeframe for receiving a deferral is 20 years from the time it was put in. If exceeds that, the end time for that 20 years is from the time that the bill-out was gone in, and the maximum amount of that deferral is 20 years from when it was put in. So, if you get 15 years ago, you get five years. It's, 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 that's, that's the way that works.
Just, just before we go any further, is that, that's the intention of the mover of the amendment? Is that how staff would interpret that, the amendment as it is?
That is correct.
Counselor Gilvasey.
Through you, Warden. So, what if, okay, so there's two parts to a septic system. You have a weeping bed and you have, like, a septic tank. The septic tanks, like, don't need to be replaced typically, but someone may have replaced the weeping bed, which essentially provides you with a new system, but it's not, I think that there's a permit system for your weeping bed, so would it be like the newest permit, or like when the weeping bed, say the weeping bed was replaced in five years, but the septic system's actually 30 years old? How are we handling that?
Through the warden to Counselor Gilvasey. I think we would look at it as whatever part of the component, so if it's, in this case, the weeping beds, if they've been replaced in five years, that would be what we'd be using as the date, as long as the septic tank is still in good working order. If the septic tank, if something happened with it, then we would need to replace it, and they would need to connect.
Okay, through you, Warden, but where is that defined in here? That it be like the newest component, and who's, who's inspecting it? It doesn't talk about inspections. So, how, like, you use the term "I think." I think is very broad. It's not a policy.
So, through the warden, for the inspections, I think we would just, sorry, a reputable company, and we would trust that if that company is in that line of business and is familiar with septics and how they operate, in order to assess that they are in good working order, we would accept that. We are not specifying that it has to be a specific company.
Okay, I still think that the policy doesn't speak to any of that. Like, I think that, that's, it's missing. I won't, I think, so I can, I can discuss, we've got the motion on the floor, so I'm discussing the amendment?
Correct.
Perfect. Okay, so, here's the thing. So, there were, when we heard from the constituents that came forward, there's two things. There's the capital expenditure, then there's that cost from going from the road to the, that's the private hookup from the road to their home. The private hookup, they can be very expensive. Some may be 5,000, some may be 20,000 or more. The issue was, is incurring the two expenses at one time, and this resolution will still allow for that to happen, because if a system is 20 years old, which quite frankly hasn't even reached half its life, if a system is 20 years old, someone is potentially looking at putting out, you know, it could be $30,000 to $40,000 immediately for paying for the capital, plus the private hookup. So, this, in my opinion, I get, you know, trying to find a balance, but it's not about an arbitrary number. It's about a system that works or doesn't work. That's really what I doesn't work. That's really what it boils down to. So for that reason, I don't think this addresses the concerns of the constituents that were here. I don't think it addresses septic systems, which even, we have seen the provincial government, you know, provide more leniency for, for septic systems. They've been tried and tested and used for 100 years. Anyways, I won't be supporting it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Mayberry?
So I guess I'm, I'm still struggling with the idea, because the way it's, the amendment is written, is that if I have a newer water hookup, I can have an ancient septic hookup, which I thought this was, what we were trying to do was prevent that. And I, I think we've got to remember that this policy doesn't have to do with one particular line in one particular town, but in fact, across the whole county. And that our water and wastewater, the reason these two are tied together is that they have traditionally been tied together in one policy. So that's, I get that part. But I'm still trying to figure out what's the, what's the, I don't know, philosophy or the desire by saying that one of the services is under 20 years, the other one gets, gets away with whatever. And, and that's where, if you separated or took that line out and just simply said, when a system or a service gets to be more than 20 years old, we replace it, or it has to hook up, it would make it much simpler, and I think much more clear for the, for the landowners or the property owners.
Any other discussion? A couple of questions from me. Are there any, for Public Works, are there any technical or functional issues that could, that could result in costs, financial implications for the county, if, if the infrastructure goes down the road, but hookups are deferred?
Yes, to the warden and all of council. So if we install a system such as a sanitary sewer, and there are some hookups, not a few, may, different things depending on the timing and where they are in the system, there could be some operational challenges. We would potentially need to flush the system a bit more frequently. There also could be some odors created within the system, but that will kind of depend on who connects at what time through the system. And I think it's also important to remember, while septics are used rurally quite frequently in a service community, that is, the preferred solution is to have all residents on a municipal system and have that waste treated at a wastewater treatment plant.
Any other questions from council or discussion? Counsel Mayberry?
I, I still want to come back, and I'm looking for an understanding of why, if I have a five-year-old, like, if I've had water installed in five years, but my septic system is 40 years old, I'm, I'm trying to understand from the mover and second, or why they would say, well, that's okay, you can have a septic system, whatever, length of time. And was that the intent of the motion? Because as you read through, and I would agree with Counsel Gilvezzi, as you read through, when you get to the end, it actually says, no, 20 years is the most you get on anything. And it seems to me that 11.6.1 clouds the issue. I, I think it's actually kind of a dangerous thing to have in there.
Deputy Warden?
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Your response to Counselor Mayberry's inquiry, I heard, I heard staff say loud and clear a very good reason as to why they're trying to reduce the burden upon, on the ratepayers to only have to install services once. You know, I was, I'm actually moved by that interpretation from my previous position of, I thought, okay, one system, one, two separate systems, when we'd have to do it. I think that's a very good reason and a good compromise as far as of trying not to put everybody through this once at a time. And certainly, again, no policy's perfect, but it's trying to address some of those concerns. And I think that staff, what I would say is that council could always ask for an improved policy to come back dictating what the interpretation is, as we've said it today, so there is clarity on those, those items. But I'll, I'll let the amendment stand as it is.
Any other discussion? Counsel Mayberry?
Well, then, since it was invited, I'll suggest that we in fact do defer and have staff come back and help us understand exactly the implications of 11.6.1, if I can get a second.
So, so I guess, just before I ask you if you're actually moving deferral, because you don't have a second yet, so it's not on the floor, I'm just going to say, ask the question, would you like to try and get that understanding from staff today before we move to deferral, or do you just want to go straight to a motion to defer?
Well, if staff can provide that information right now, I'd be happy to hear it.
Does staff want to take a crack at helping the counselor and council understand that before we move a deferral?
So through the warden, that intent was from the original policy. It is not a result of the amendment that's on the floor. So the intent was if we are doing a project that has one service that's installed, we're only looking at that age of that one service, and that would be impacted. If we have a project that has both services installed, we want to do the mandatory connection in a way that's most efficient and most cost-effective for the property owners. So only having to do that once. And we want to get as best use as we can over those systems that are, those private systems and the age of which they've been installed. So we are looking at the youngest one, the most recently installed in order to determine that date.
So in this case, the water issue doesn't count. There is only one system being installed.
Through the warden, for the specific King Street West Hamilton Road project, it is only sanitary that is a new service. We'd only be looking at sanitary for that specific project.
Okay, thank you.
And I just want to remind council that the, while the delegation we received today was about a specific project, this policy is not about that specific project, although it would apply, it's countywide. Any other discussion, questions? All right. So on the amendment then, do you want the amendment read again? Not seeing anybody asking for it. So I'm going to call the question.
Warden, I ask for a recorded vote, please.
Yes, you can. Just to clarify, this is, the recorded vote is on the amendment, not on the amendment.
So on the amendment, Warden Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Counselor Gilvezzi?
No.
Counselor Tate?
No.
Counselor Palmer?
Yes.
Counselor Schaefer?
Yes.
Deputy Warden Petrie?
Yes.
And Counselor Mayberry?
Yes.
All right, that carries.
That's carried. So now on the, now amended motion, which, I think, unfortunately, I'm going to ask you to read the whole thing. Sorry. Yeah. So I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the clerk to read now the fully amended motion, the original, and now amended, and then ask for discussion and call the question.
Resolve that the recommendation contained in report CS 2025-03 titled Extension of Municipal Water and Wastewater Services Policy be adopted. Whereas the County of Oxford official plan policies for water and wastewater servicing speak to the need for mandatory connections when extending services to areas where development has taken place prior with private services. And whereas some of those private services have been installed or replaced in a recent timeframe, and those property owners may wish to use those investments for a reasonable time to recoup some of the value of the investment, as well as have adequate time to be able to fund those investments prior to incurring more cost to connect to county services. And whereas there is an opportunity to balance both items and create an equitable policy that will allow residents an option to defer mandatory connection to county services for a reasonable period that would allow their goals to be addressed, as well as allow the county's goals of their official plan to be accomplished with a reasonable timeframe. And whereas section 11.3 of the current policy speaks to ensuring that deferrals only apply to properly working private systems, therefore be it resolved that section 11.6 of Attachment 1, Extension of Municipal Water and Wastewater Services Policy be amended as follows. 11.6, replacement of private services within 20 years of installation. 11.61, property owners may apply for deferral if one of the impacted services was installed within 20 years from the date of the bill out by law referenced in section 5.22. Property owner is required to submit proof of installation date. 11.62, the deferral will be limited to the mandatory connection date only and will not apply to the capital billing fees under this deferral option. 11.63, the term of the deferral shall be to a maximum of 20 years from when the service was installed and will be confirmed by the treasurer. 11.64, extensions of deferrals granted under section 11.6 will not be offered. This does not prevent the property owner from requesting an extension based on financial hardship as outlined in section 11.5 through the submission of a subsequent application.
Thank you. Discussion on the amended motion. Deputy Warden Petrie?
Thank you, Warden. Through you. I'll be supporting this. I do want to thank the residents, and I think it's proof that progress can be made through advocacy. Certainly not everything that they're looking for, and that's certainly something that each round around this table have a, you know, we're advocating for, well, we, as well, we, we, a lot of times happens to what we're looking for as well. That being said, I think the process did work. It started as a result of notification of pending capital costs. There was a public meeting held to be able to have further discussion and communication between residents. A delegation was brought forward, followed by a motion to look at this, which staff did, and I thank you very much for their expertise and input. And then, you know, we got this back, and we looked at it, and we deferred it to have further thought on it and a further delegation. And so I think that council has given this due consideration. It's certainly not, there is no perfect policy. Every municipality has different ones, and there's a reason for that, because there's different, there's all these different ways to do things. And I think this is an improvement. It addresses some concerns. I don't think it's possible to address all residents' concerns and still meet the needs of the county's policies and the goals of that within a reasonable timeframe. So I will, I am supporting this, and I will request a recorded vote on this as well, please.
Any other discussion on the amended motion? Yeah, this is a difficult one, I think, because this is one of those, as so many policies are, one of those ones where wherever you draw the line, some resident is going to find themselves on the wrong side of that line, wherever you draw it. In this case, there's multiple lines, I think, with respect to the capital costs, the hookup costs, but also that even if that was deferred entirely, there would be residents who might be in a situation where they're saying, you know, the system that I'm hooked up to now does not function properly. And why does it not function properly? Because as we've heard, there may be technical issues, functional issues, without enough flow in the system because people haven't hooked up. Those people would then find themselves on the wrong side of the line and would not like it. I think, you know, policies like this have been in place in the county, and many residents throughout the county have hooked up under policies that are frankly not nearly as flexible as, as the one that's being proposed here today. And, and I know many of those residents who hooked up under those policies. So I think one of the points made in the delegation today was that we should not automatically adopt policies that other municipalities use, because we don't necessarily know how well they're, they're, they're doing with those, right? I've used that argument many times with, with other counselors in debates. Just because somebody else is doing it doesn't mean that they're loving it. They may be having a debate at the same time to decide to undo the thing that they've decided to do. But I frankly looked at it the other way around. Belleville adopted something in 2024, and I guarantee you, it's too early for them to assess whether that's working or not. We're just over a year from them adopting that policy. I'd be surprised if they in fact had any hookups yet, and if they did, whether they actually know what the consequences of that kind of deferral is, are. So we can't really judge that, whereas some, many of the policies that staff reviewed in making their policy recommendation are based on policies that have been in place for many years and are understood, both financial and functional implications of those policies. So for those reasons, I think that the deputy warden has done a good job here of trying to find a line, again, a line that somebody will always find themselves on the wrong side of, but trying to find a line that gets a functioning system that's environmentally responsible for, for Oxford and has more flexibility for residents in addition to the distance hookup permission and the financial hardship permission, which is still available to anybody under this. So for those reasons, I will be supporting this. Any other discussion? Counsel Tate?
Yeah, just through the chair, I will not be supporting this. I think maybe we shouldn't be drawing a line. And we are putting an undue hardship on these people. It's tough enough as it is in this economy to make a go of it, to own your own home, to pay the very high taxes we have in this county, and then to include this when you've purchased and you've paid for a septic system. So I don't think it should be mandatory. When the system fails, you, you hook up. There's no expense to the county, and if they don't hook up, and I will not support this.
Any other discussion? I'll turn it over to the clerk for a recorded vote.
Deputy Warden Petrie?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
No.
Counselor Schaefer?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Counsel Martin?
Yes, sorry, I can't hear the clerk.
Okay, so that's carried.
That motion is carried. And next item on the agenda then, sorry, I'm just going to double check, because we reordered there. I want to make sure I'm not missing anything, is 8.2, Public Works, 8.2.1, PW 2025-05, Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement Housing Enabling Water System Fund. And Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight for council before I ask them for questions?
Not on this report. Thank you.
Questions from council for the director of Public Works. Counsel Gilvezzi?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Tate. Resolve that the recommendation contained in report PW 2025-05 titled Ontario Transfer Payment Agreement Housing Enabling Water System Fund be adopted?
Any discussion? Just want to thank staff again for doing the work to get this submitted and get the money to flow. So pardon the pun. That's it. Any other discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.2.2, PW 2025-0, sorry, 6, Request for Project Approval, Fleet Asset 684 Reclassification and Replacement, Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight for council?
Yes, thank you. Just want to bring forward this report. So unfortunately, Unit 684, which is a 2006 single axle heavy truck, unfortunately, it recently failed a safety inspection due to structural issues. So instead of coming back to council and requesting replacement of a similar heavy truck, which would have a cost estimate of approximately $300,000, we're recommending downsizing to a more effective crane trailer. And so this will have a reduction in both the procurement cost for the capital cost, as well as operating cost, and also make it a little easier for operations, because it will no longer require a DZ licensed driver to drive this vehicle. And we are also anticipating it will reduce our greenhouse gas emissions by 1.2 tons per year. So bringing forward this to council, I know unfortunately, it was not part of the capital budget, but I'm here to answer any questions that council might have.
Questions from council? Counsel Palmer?
Through, through the warden, the new director. Isn't it possible to have a picture, something? It's hard to just look at a piece of writing and know what I'm dealing with.
I can provide a picture after the fact to the counselor and the rest of council, but I don't unfortunately have one right now to share.
You want, you want to see the truck? Any, any other discussion? Any other discussion? Counselor Mayberry?
Just a quick question. Was the vehicle, did you say the vehicle was a 2006?
That is correct, yes.
The one that has failed. I'm just curious, 2006 makes it almost 20 years old. Curious, how many other vehicles do we have that are more than 10, 15 years old? Like, it doesn't surprise me to have anything that old because after 20 years, it doesn't surprise me that the frame is rusted out.
Through the warden to council. So we are limited. We don't have many vehicles that are that age. It's normally some of the larger equipments, such as like a compact or things like that, that reach that age. This is definitely one of the oldest.
Any other questions on the report? Counselor Schaefer?
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Warden Petrie. Resolve the recommendations contained in the report, Pw. 2025-06 titled Request for Project Approval Fleet Asset 684 Reclassification and Replacement be adopted.
Any discussion? Deputy Warden, Pete, sorry, I'll go to Counselor Schaefer as he was then Deputy Warden, Peter.
Thank you, Warden. Just through Director Abercrombie, I want to commend Public Works for their forward thinking here and also their prudence in replacing a truck with a trailer that will provide a lot more flexibility. Thank you.
Deputy Warden?
I was trying to steal it before you did, and he, Counselor Schaefer did an excellent job of doing that, so well done.
Anyone else? Yeah, I think at budget time, if one of us found $243,000 worth of savings, we'd all be patting each other on the back. So thanks to staff for doing likewise and perhaps even saving money and improving effectiveness, so. Anybody else before I call the question? All who's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And given that I think we will not get done before lunch, and lunch is here, I'm going to suggest that we stop now for lunch and come back. How long do you want for lunch? Half an hour? Forty-five minutes? Anybody? Half an hour? Come back 12:15-ish?
12:20 I'll call the meeting back to order and we are still in 8.2 Public Works, we're at 8.2.3. PW 2025-07 Reduced Load Limit Bylaw Amendment. Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight for council before I ask them for questions?
Yes, thank you. So the Reduced Load Limit Bylaw we have in front of you today is to modernize the approach. As most people see driving around the county, our signs are from March 30th, or sorry, March 1st to April 30th. And with the changing winters that we've been experiencing, we need to sometimes adjust that to protect our roads. So this amendment would allow us to do that and both Manager Gross and I are able to answer any questions council might have.
Questions from council on the report. Councilor Palmer.
I guess my question through the warden to Melissa. Will you have the same signs in south part of Norw- south part of Oxford as in the north? They get more snow, they, there's, it's colder? Or warmer?
A question or a tourism pitch there?
Well, a little bit of both, I suppose. Yeah, will the signs be the same throughout the county?
So currently the signs are the same throughout the county. Once we, if we, council adopts this and we move to changing it, we will be working with our area municipalities as well as our neighboring municipalities to make sure that there is some consistency. And if there was, for some reason, something that would be, say, different in Norwich, different than, say, Zora, we would work with the area municipalities and neighboring to make sure it's consistent.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the report? Councilor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Atchion. Resolved recommendations contained in report PW 2025-07 titled Reduced Load Limit Bylaw be adopted.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And human services, 8.3 Human Services, 8.3.1 HS 2025-01 Centralized Intake Expansion for Ontario Works. Acting Director Smith, is there anything you'd like to highlight for council?
Yes, thank you through the warden. This report really is just here today to provide a quick update on centralized intake for Ontario Works. We did move to the full implementation in December. Just to remind council, this centralized intake process is to modernize the application process for Ontario Works. So that our caseworkers can now focus on case management and kind of that intensive support on that side of things. And we do have Jackie DeGraff here in the audience who's one of our acting managers to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions from council? Not seeing any. Counselor, Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Mayberry. Resolved the recommendations contained in report HS 2025-01 titled Provincial Centralized Intake Expansion for Ontario Works be adopted.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.4 Paramedic Services, 8.4.1 PS 2025-02 Legacy Oil and Gas Wells Action Plan Funding Program Year Three Emergency Response Decontamination Trailer. Chief Hall.
12:20, I'll call the meeting back to order and we are still in 8.2 Public Works. We're at 8.2.3 PW 2025-07 Reduced Load Limit Bylaw Amendment. Director Abercrombie, is there anything you want to highlight for council before I ask them for questions?
Yes, thank you. So, the Reduced Load Limit Bylaw we have in front of you today is to modernize the approach. As most people see driving around the county, our signs are from March 30th, or sorry, March 1st to April 30th. And with the changing winters that we've been experiencing, we need to sometimes adjust that to protect our roads. So this amendment would allow us to do that. And both Manager Gross and I are able to answer any questions council might have.
Questions from council on the report. Counselor Palmer.
I guess my question through the warden to Melissa. Will you have the same signs in south part of Norw- south part of Oxford as in the north? They get more snow, they, there's, it's colder? More warmer?
Not a question or a tourism pitch there?
Well, a little bit of both, I suppose. Yeah, will the signs be the same throughout the county?
So currently, the signs are the same throughout the county. Once we, if we, council adopts this and we move to changing it, we will be working with our area municipalities as well as our neighboring municipalities to make sure that there is some consistency. And if there was, for some reason, something that would be, say, different in Norwich, different than, say, Zora, we would work with the area municipalities and neighboring to make sure it's consistent.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the report? Counselor Schaefer.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Atchione. Resolved recommendations contained in report PW 2025-07 titled Reduced Load Limit Bylaw be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And human services, 8.3 Human Services, 8.3.1 HS 2025-01 Centralized Intake Expansion for Ontario Works. Acting Director Smith, is there anything you'd like to highlight for council?
Yes, thank you through the warden. This report really is just here today to provide a quick update on centralized intake for Ontario Works. We did move to the full implementation in December. Just to remind council, this centralized intake process is to modernize the application process for Ontario Works so that our caseworkers can now focus on case management and kind of that intensive support on that side of things. And we do have Jackie DeGraff here in the audience, who's one of our acting managers to answer any questions. Thank you.
Questions from council. Not seeing any. Counselor, or Deputy Warden Petrie.
Thank you, Warden, through you. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Mayberry. Resolved the recommendation contained in report HS 2025-01 titled Provincial Centralized Intake Expansion for Ontario Works be adopted.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And 8.4 Paramedic Services, 8.4.1 PS 2025-02 Legacy Oil and Gas Wells Action Plan Funding Program Year Three Emergency Response Decontamination Trailer. Chief Hall, is there anything you want to highlight for council?
Yeah, just a quick, something that I neglected to put in. This project initially came about kind of as an addendum to our original three-year funding. When the opportunity came around, all of the area fire chiefs and myself met and discussed this, the potential for this project and supported it. And I just, I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the contribution that Woodstock Fire Chief Slager has contributed to this project. He sat on the working group with six other counties in the area to spec this trailer out and was acted as our subject matter expert. Obviously, I'm not in the decontamination business, that is a realm of fire departments, and Chief Slager absolutely did some good work for us there.
Questions from council on the report. Not seeing any. Counselor Palmer.
Moved by myself, seconded Counselor Atchione. Resolved that the recommendations contained in report PS 2025-02 titled Legacy Oil and Gas Wells Action Plan Funding Program Year Three. Emergency Response and Decontamination Trailer be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. 8.5 Woodingford Lodge, 8.5.1 WDFL 2025-01 Woodingford Lodge Accreditation Update. Director Dagger, is there anything you want to highlight for council there?
Yes, thank you, Warden, and through members of council. One of the things I just want to highlight very quickly for council is that this process through the accreditation is not a mandatory requirement. As many of you are aware that through the COVID pandemic, the legislation for long-term care did change, making us one of the most heavily regulated industries, even surpassing now nuclear. So at the end of the day, this is certainly a good news story that we're bringing to council today. The driver behind us taking part in this initiative and this exercise certainly is to best support our home and the initiatives as we have long-term care inspectors coming into our home. By going through the accreditation process, as you can see in the report, over 282 highlighted areas of best practice standards that were reviewed during that accreditation process certainly puts us in a better position that when the ministry comes in as frequently as they do, we're well prepared to make sure that our standards of practice meet the requirements from provincial regulations. Certainly, these reports are very positive for us to bring to council. It's certainly a testament to the good work that the staff are doing at Woodingford Lodge and to help service the needs of our residents in Oxford County. So with that, I'll just pause and turn it back to you, Mr. Warden.
Questions from council on the report. Counselor Mayberry.
Just looking through the place. It talks about the cost of accreditation was $23,895, and now Accreditation Canada is going to pay us $30,804 for staying accredited? Is that basically? Okay, so I guess I'm curious, how often will we be reviewed or trying to remember the name of the word, checked on to make sure that we're actually achieving the level? First of all, congratulations on achieving that level, and appreciate that very much for you and all the staff. But I'm just curious, is this $30,000 to do a good job when we should anyways?
Through you, Warden, to Counselor Mayberry. Excellent question. So certainly through the accreditation with accommodations, as is illustrated in our reward that we got through the accreditation process, that gives us a four-year term. It depends on the varying degree of accreditation award that you receive. It could be a two-year, it could be a three-year. We did receive the highest honor of four-year. So with that said, the annual cost is illustrated in there of, call it, annual membership cost to be accredited, to remain accredited. Thereafter, the costs that we receive from the Ministry of Long-Term Care, being an accredited home ongoing will help support offset costs of staffing and things of that nature as well until we get to the next accreditation process. So it is a four-year term that we have achieved.
So do I understand we're going to get the $30,000, $31,000 every year for four years? And do we have a ballpark figure as to what it costs us to actually achieve it? And I'm not suggesting we shouldn't, I'm just, like you said, $20,000 a year or $50,000 a year to stay accredited?
So, three-year, so, Warden, so the annual accreditation cost is not, I believe it was under $5,000 to remain accredited per year. In the survey year, the fourth year, third year, or the term that's presented to you is where the additional cost will come into play that will have the surveyors come in from Accreditation Canada to do the work they do for the week or two that they're within your home. Every year thereafter, for the midterm of the accreditation cycle, year one, year two, year three, the money is still provided to an accredited home that could use to offset costs as well of staff members, like a quality staff member, to continue to prepare for the cycles through accreditation.
Anyone else? Counselor Palmer.
Moved by myself, seconded Counselor Tate. Resolved that the recommendation contained in the report WDFL 2025-01 titled Woodingford Lodge Accreditation Update be adopted.
Is there any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried. No motions, no notices, just any inquiries for staff? Not seeing any closed session. Counselor Tate.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Gilvaysey, that council arrives and go into a closed session to consider report PW 2025-08 regarding a trade secret or scientific, technical, commercial, financial, or labor relations information supplied in confidence to the municipality or local board, which if disclosed could reasonably be expected to reduce significantly the competitive position or interfere significantly with the contractual or other negotiations of a person, group of persons, or organization.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Opposed? That is carried, and we're going into closing. Just a reminder to leave your phones in here.
Extend the February 12, 2025 council meeting until 2:30.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Can I have a motion to return to closed to Counsel Petrie?
I agree with myself. I think Counsel will be seeing that Counsel, if you want to close session on the following matter, that Counsel should consider report from W C S two and two five as their paper regarding trade secrets or scientific head book for commercial money or related information supply to common to this valuable board which is disclosed and relegated back to the business and into the competitive position.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Oppose? Good deal. All right, we are back from closed at 1:53 and we are at item 14, consideration of matters arising from closed session. Counselor Mayberry?
Thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. Resolve the recommendation contained in report PW's closed session 2025-08 be adopted as amended.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And bylaws, Counsel Arcioli.
Through you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Mayberry. Resolve that the following bylaws be read a first and second time, 6705-2025 and 6706-2025.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And Counsel Arcioli?
Through you, moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Mayberry. Resolve that the following bylaws be given a third and final reading, 6705-2025 and 6706-2025.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And motion to adjourn, Counselor Mayberry?
Moved by, thank you, Warden. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Warden Petrie. Resolve the council meeting of February 12, 2025 be adjourned until the next meeting scheduled for February 26, 2025 at 9:30 a.m.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried and we are adjourned.